We'll call that speed in the Louisville City Council's order. And we do have a forum present. City Secretary?
Mayor, the first item on the agenda is a discussion of regular agenda items and consent agenda items.
Okay. Go through the, we've got a Salvation Army presentation. The first item under public hearings, number one. Do you may have any questions on that? If you continue with the-
The next item on the first discussion of agenda items is public hearing, number one.
Mayor and Council, this item is the expansion of your Old Town Tiff. Expansion in acreage and expansion of the number of years. And during the public hearing, Jason can actually share the map that shows the actual, the recommended boundaries.
The next item for discussion, Mayor, is on consent agenda. Consent agenda item number two is approval of minutes. Consent agenda item number three is a resolution adopting the city's legislative agenda.
So Mayor and Council, we had a workshop on this item. We discussed in general items of consideration. And the way it's listed now, we have five critical issues that we are focused on. You have that in your backup memo. It's annexation authority under the SPA, relief from destination source sales tax for existing ED agreements, place hiring and dismissal reform, amending the state mandated budget timeline enacted in 29, and keeping the May general date. So those are the five critical issues that we've identified. Obviously, as we move forward, there could be some additional items. I know several of you have talked to me about a couple of issues that we might add as we move forward. And we will be researching those, the particulars of those issues.
Next item on the agenda is just, I'm sorry, does someone else have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
No. The next item is a resolution authorizing agreements between the city of Louisville and the community development block grant CB1 subrep recipients.
Good.
The next item is item five, which is a developer agreement between the city of Louisville and CRP/NRP Louisville.
Good.
And the last item is a resolution extending the declaration of local disaster. Mayor, our next item on workshop session will be the DCT, DCTA update.
Mayor and Council tonight, Councilman Gilmore will be presenting and Brandy Byrd, our transportation consultant, will be walking you through some of the updates related to DCTA. And with that, I will turn over to Councilman Gilmore.
How do we want to deal with displaying the slide deck?
I believe Ms. Byrd is going to display the presentation, Councilman.
I'll pull it up now, TJ, while you're giving us an intro.
Awesome. Thank you so much. So the outline for today is we finally gotten the, what looks to be the final draft, barring a few small edits, of the efficiency study slash transformation initiative. No name stays unchanged in this organization. To give you a quick recap of at least the city's goals, as have been conversed, and these, of course, can change and we can have other conversations about them. But really, we've buttoned that down to three specific goals, is to protect the taxpayers' investment in DCTA, to increase ridership, and to improve services for Louisville residents. With that, the efficiency study coming back has really given us some things that I think we can put our teeth into and would like to get a little bit of feedback from council on. First of all, we had Accenture selected to conduct the analysis of every aspect of DCTA. And it's making recommendations from organization and governance, service analysis, and technology needs analysis. They basically gave us 30 different actionables. We're going to look, I think, today, and I'm going to have Brandy kind of dive a little bit deeper into the service analysis piece, because I think there's some decision points that are going to be coming pretty quickly. And this, I think, will give you some ideas on where we may be able to go for service within Louisville. So with that, I'm going to hand everything over to Brandy Byrd and let her drill down into the service recommendations.
Thank you, Councilman Gilmore. Appreciate that. So for council and for Mayor, we're going to really focus, as TJ said, on the service analysis piece. Accenture has done a broad-based effort looking at a number of different aspects of DCTA's organization. But the service is the most exciting decision point that's coming up in the near future for the DCTA board. And before the board entertains those decisions, TJ wanted to make sure and bring this to you, so that you had an opportunity to review it and to provide some feedback as well. So before I get into the efficiency study recommendations, I just wanted to show you just a quick snapshot of the current bus service that exists in Louisville. So there are two routes currently, Route 21 and Route 22, and they're shown here on the map in purple. I wanted to also give you a snapshot of pre-COVID ridership data. So this is 2019, fiscal year 2019 data. Route 21 averages 4.2 passengers per hour, and it runs every 30 minutes during the peak period and every 40 minutes during off-peak. And then Route 22 averaged 5.5 passengers per hour in 2019, and it runs every 30 minutes and then every hour off-peak. So now I just wanted to get into a little bit of the analysis that Accenture has done on current service in Louisville, where some of the service gaps are, and then where the board is headed for the future. So I just wanted to mention to you, before I get into all this data and analysis, that the DCTA board is considering some type of expansion of on-demand service that could incorporate the entire city of Louisville, or it could be some combination of fixed route bus service and on-demand service. So I just wanted to mention that as you look at these maps. I think it's important to keep that in mind. But we did also want to share with you this data and analysis as some of these future decisions on service come forward. So Accenture looked at three different criteria for service standards for DCTA. And this is really looking at where best to deploy service and where some of the gaps may exist. So this first slide is showing you density criteria in the entire DCTA service area, but especially in the city of Louisville. So you'll see the areas highlighted in orange really show you the highest densities in the city of Louisville, and the areas shown in green shows you the lower density. And I'm going to go through these pretty quickly, because I really want to get into the heart of the service discussion, but I did want you to have this data and analysis first. So the second slide shows you additional density criteria. This is really showing you the areas in Louisville that could support 20-minute bus service, and that's shown in yellow. And then the areas in green are showing you densities that could support 30-minute bus service. And then the areas in pink are showing you areas of the city of Louisville that could support hour or 60-minute frequency of bus service.
And I want to put a quick point in here. When we talked with the transportation consultants, we were in the middle of COVID and we were back to hour headways. One of the things those consultants told us was that if you're in the 30-minute to an hour headways, you're really on life support as a transit agency. You're not really providing a service that's timely enough for people to really use it as part of their day-to-day. So even though you're seeing here one bus per hour and two buses per hour, which, those are metrics especially for large geographies, where you maybe want to get a lot of coverage, so maybe a Tucson-Arizona, but not necessarily the same type of decision-making in a more densely urban area. You'll also notice on all of these maps, not a single one of them covers far eastern Louisville. Brandy?
That's a great point, TJ. Thank you for pointing that out. And I should say TJ has been probably the most vocal advocate on the DCTA board for providing more service in the city of Louisville and throughout the DCTA service area and more frequent service, which we've talked about regularly. So just because Accenture is saying that these particular densities support this frequency of service doesn't mean that that's the best use of the tax dollars that are being invested in DCTA to provide the best service to your residents. So that's really what we've been focused on as part of this discussion as well. So this next criteria is showing you productivity. So this is really showing you all eight bus routes in Denton, that's the DC 1 through 8, and then the two Louisville Connect routes, 21 and 22. And so according to Accenture, from their perspective, the minimum threshold for fixed route bus service is 10 boardings per hour. And you can see that the Louisville Connect 21 and 22 is significantly below that threshold, both pre-COVID and currently. So pre-COVID is showing you generally in blue, and then green is more current ridership. So that just gives you a feel for the threshold by which fixed route bus service makes sense as far as the number of boardings per hour. These next couple of slides get into an equity analysis. And so again, keep in mind, we're talking about expanding, or the DCTA board is talking about expanding coverage to cover the entire city of Louisville. So that will address all of these equity areas that are currently lacking in service. But I did want to point it out to you, just so that you have this data point as we're considering these decisions. So this first slide shows you all of the areas in yellow that have greater than 70% people of color. So you can see the fixed route bus service is in black on all of these maps. And so all of these areas in yellow here are outside of the existing fixed route service. This next slide shows you areas of the city of Louisville that have greater than 26% households below the poverty line. So again, you've got a pretty significant area over here in northeastern Louisville that is not currently covered by the fixed route service. This next slide shows you areas of Louisville that have greater than 40% people with disabilities. And again, there's just a few areas here on the northwestern side of Louisville that are not currently covered with the existing service. And this last and final equity slide shows you areas in the city of Louisville that have greater than 8% zero-car households. So again, just a few areas here in the northwestern part of Louisville that are not currently covered with fixed route service.
And so, go ahead. Sorry, Brandy.
Please, TJ, you go ahead.
So every one of those slides is a different criteria that the board will be reviewing and deciding if that's a threshold or a criteria that makes sense for that part of Denton County, for that municipality. And you'll notice, kind of as you were flipping through, Denton's a little bit different in that they both have a fixed bus route for the city itself, and then they have UNT Services, which is a contract bus route. And there's a chunk of overlap, quite a bit, between the two services. And so data for all of these has been very difficult to come by. We don't know, for example, who gets on at what stations. We get total numbers of ridership, but we don't know who gets on at what station, who gets off at what station. We don't have peak times. We don't know who gets on, you know, in the mornings, you know, do we have a large chunk of people, like early morning and late afternoon? We have none of that data, just to be clear. So it's very difficult, and Accenture's told us this, that without a lot of that data, it's very difficult for us to kind of project new routes, other than by looking at different standards that we might want to implement. So that's kind of the big picture of all of this. But what makes this interesting is those data points all start making me go, why are we spending the money that we're spending on fixed bus routes if we can get better coverage? And so one of the options that's on the table is an on-demand service. So it's similar to what's called an Uber Pool. And Brandy, maybe you can tell us a little bit more about how that is different?
Yes, absolutely. So we've got just a picture here, just to illustrate to you the type of vehicles that could be used for this on-demand type service. So similar to Uber Pool, it's app-based, so you would request a ride on your cell phone. They do, however, have a call-in number for anyone who does not have a smartphone, so they have that capability as well, to address anyone that does not have smartphone capability. It's a maximum of six passengers per trip. So the software is pairing you with other people who generally are located in your same area that want to travel at the same time. So sometimes this could be single trips. Most of the time, it's going to be between two and four passengers per trip. And so the DCTA board is considering an expansion of this service in both Louisville and Denton. And the question that they're currently discussing is whether that service should be deployed throughout the entire city of Louisville and eliminate the fixed route service that exists, or if it should be some combination of the two. And so that's really why we're here today, is to just present these concepts to you and get a chance for your feedback as well. So on both ends, about the pickup and the destination, it's within a couple of minute walk. So you may have to walk a block or two in order to be picked up. And then same at the other end when you arrive at your destination.
So, go ahead.
Oh, no, please, TJ, you go ahead.
So this system is, been rolled out in Arlington, and they've had tremendous success. They're, of course, they're known as the biggest city in the country without a transit system. So they've gone, as you can see, the graphic here actually is their branding. So VIA is the company, but it's the Arlington branding. We would have similar. The thing that I think makes this interesting is that not only does it provide for much higher frequency than we would have even at today's, if we ran everything back to pre-COVID level, we would have the same service times. We could get all of the data that they provide, or that they gather while they're contracted with us, we get. So we could actually use this over a couple of years to generate fixed route service routes that made sense. We wouldn't be guessing or throwing a dart at the board and hoping that what we picked made sense. It does cover ADA compliance. I know we have, to make sure that if we make any changes, we do have some federal requirements to make sure that we cover that. So the VIA team has done a great job of being able to fit that space. And then I think we have another slide. So the suggestion here is to go ahead and eliminate the entire bus service and just cover the entire city with on-demand. And so that includes areas where we don't have any coverage today, and we really should, from an equity standpoint. We have residents who are living in Louisville that have no access to transit, because they're either on the far east side of Castle Hills, or, you know, we just, we just don't have a good option for them. What you can see here, the current service, and this is our 2019 numbers, which is the last year of real numbers, I would say that COVID has decimated good data for this year. But you can see here, our total cost of service is 2.5 million. On-demand is proposing actually a few more trips that they estimate. The average cost per trip is almost $10 per trip less. And we've got the option to add Sunday service and also to extend to match DART service hours. And I think that's something we really want to look at. Connectivity to DART, for folks to be able to come to our employment centers, I think, is important. I think the ability to get picked up and go to the rail station without having to park my car somewhere, or like many of us do, just drive down to Trinity Mills and catch the rail there from, from DART instead of getting on DCT at all. I think those are a couple of pretty important flexible points that we can get there, plus the data. And we were talking with a couple of our developers, and pardon me, Jason, but I may be pinging you without you realizing it. But we've been told by a couple of our developers that this could be a game changer for a couple of our business parks, because it would give them transit accessibility that they just simply don't have right now. Jason, did you want to add anything to that, or are we good?
No, sir. I think you're right on Waters Ridge and Convergents. Both are business parks have mentioned that this would be very big for their operations.
So those are, I think, some of the compelling reasons to do this. I think if we do move in this direction, you know, it looks like we're saving money, we're getting better data, we're getting more flexibility for ridership. And quite frankly, we'd still be a bus agency in the fact that we have a large contract with UNT. So if in two or three years, or whatever this contract timeframe is, I haven't seen all that yet, if we decide to go to a mobility as a service, we'd still have bus infrastructure to move back into a fixed route service, if we felt it was, it was the best use of our tax dollars. So those are kind of the big pieces. Now, one question I got was, where is the big, final Accenture document? That does not officially get presented to the board until, I think, the 10th, which is in a couple of days. Once that happens, I'll make sure that a copy of that gets out to everybody on council. Brandy, anything I missed?
Yeah, just a couple of things that I might add, TJ, just to sum it up. So you can see from this comparison, and this is all, of course, draft. So this on-demand proposal has not been officially voted on yet by the DCTA board, but it does give you just a snapshot of what that could look like. It's about $900,000 a year, that would be the cost savings, between the current cost of bus service and the proposed cost of on-demand, which gives you much greater coverage. It also gives you much better frequency. As we discussed, your current bus service is somewhere between 30 and 60-minute frequencies currently. And so this would give you five to seven-minute frequencies all day, which is pretty exciting. We think that will really be a game changer for the city of Louisville. And then like TJ said, the board will then have lots of opportunities for discussion about how best to invest that cost savings and that $900,000 a year could extend service to Sundays and then also extend the hours to better match up with DART service. Right now, DART service, as you know, because I know some of your council members have pointed this out in discussions in the past, DCTA service ends at 9:30 PM on most of their routes, and DART service extends to 1:30 AM. So you've got a significant gap in the evenings, and then an hour gap in the mornings as well. So it could have some opportunities for the DCTA board to consider reinvesting those cost savings and some expansions to provide better service to your residents.
So Mayor and Council, the question is, of course, TJ will be acting on these, this proposal as a Louisville representative on the DCTA board. And I know what he was hoping for tonight is to get any input or direction from the council.
I have, I have a little quick comment to make. You know, I've been sitting in these board meetings for, I guess, a couple of months now, and I've been getting my arms around everything that's going on here. I can't find a reason not to do this. We, we increase our coverage, we save money, and, and we get the data that we need to make good decisions about, you know, possible routes that we could do in the future. I think the data that's been presented, that we do have, shows that we're, we're less than half of the threshold that we need to actually justify a fixed route on the two that we do have, which says to me that what we have right now is, is a broken system and that we need to fix it, and we need the data to do that. And I think this, this gets us there. This gets our better coverage, a better customer base, and it gives us that data that we need to make a better informed decision. So I'm just not seeing a reason not to support this.
Well, I'll just jump in as the, as the Johnny skeptic here. Having been on the advisory board and seen DCTA over the years, I think the, all, all the good things are there. The one thing we need to be cognizant of, we need to make sure that those riders who actually depend on, on the system are communicated to how they, how the new system is going to work, and make sure that we fill in any holes that are going to happen between, you know, going to this on-demand service and actually get data. You know, my skepticism is, we haven't run the fixed system well, so I worry about how we're going to run the on-demand system. Hopefully, the data that we'll get back will be actually coming in and we can, we can actually see that. Like I said, I'm skeptical, but I'm going to go with the, I'm going to go with it, but I definitely want to see that report, because, I mean, we really need to know what's going on over there. And hopefully, this will work out and we can actually catch the gaps that will, that may fall through. I think expanded, expanded service and on Sundays and matching DART will be great. Hopefully, we can do a good job with that.
I have a question. I recall, we're talking about on-demand, but we're still saying people have to walk, you know, to the specific location to get picked up or dropped off. I'm not sure I understand that concept of having on-demand, but still have to go to a certain location.
Brandy, you want to deal with that?
Yes, absolutely. So, and then I want to go back to Councilman Jones' questions or comments as well. So Councilman Troyer, the issue is, it's a very short walk on both ends. And so it may very well be, if it's one pickup, then obviously it will be at your location and you'll be dropped off at your destination. But the, the purpose of it is to try to group multiple citizens together into one trip. Obviously, I don't know that we want it to be as convenient as Uber, because it is public transportation. You want to maximize the dollars that you're spending to provide those rides, and so that's really the purpose of it. But the software is very sophisticated, and it, it may very well be a very short walk on both ends, but you do want to try to group those passengers as much as possible to maximize those dollars. Does that answer your question?
Then I agree with, with Councilman Jones that we would definitely have to train people on how to use, how to use the app to figure out where they're supposed to meet. Because I drive for Lyft, okay? And I run into, daily, I run into problems with people not knowing, not going to where they need to be to be picked up, or they'll put their address in, and then they end up being somewhere else when I get there. So people need to know, you know, people need to be trained in how to use the app so they get where they're supposed to be.
Absolutely. And so that's back to Councilman Jones' question as well, or comment. The marketing and communications plan to the public is going to be critical for this effort, and the board hasn't gotten into these details yet. But certainly, what will be contemplated is a slow rollout and most likely an overlay of both fixed route and on-demand for some time, so that the service and the citizens who regularly depend on it can ramp up and understand how that service will function.
And hopefully, I would think that DCTA would involve the city's communication departments in that dissemination. I think we often know better how to talk with our residents, and so we would certainly want to be a part of that.
That's a great point, Donna, absolutely. And I'm sure TJ will communicate that back to DCTA staff, as he has regularly in the past on the same issue as well. And then Councilman Jones, just to answer your other question related to, to rollout of the service and how that might best function, the, the DCTA board is looking at two proposals from private sector vendors to provide this service. And so as he mentioned, the program has been really popular in Arlington. They've had a lot of history and experience in this area. And so I, I won't speak for TJ, but I think that the board feels comfortable that this service could be rolled out potentially better than other services have been in the past.
I think we need to make sure we, we look for the temporary residents of Louisville sponsoring hotels, or say they have a temporary location of their job here, that they would use the service as long as they're picked up in Louisville and dropped off in Louisville. And we need to make sure that they are included in this.
Absolutely, Mayor. That's a great point. So noted.
Anybody else? Okay.
I think that's all we needed. I do want to just say, we've come a long way. If you remember- remember, two years ago, we were seeking legislation so that we could have a council member that sits on this board. And so now to be at this point where we're really, we've got now E lap funds. So money's coming back to the cities for investment in sidewalks and roads and trails and now this improvement in service. So I just think we've made great advances over the last couple of years. And certainly, Councilman Gilmore has has represented Louisville very well on this board.
Okay. Hold on, is that way? Mayor Protim Ferguson, did you have some comments?
Yes, Mayor. I'm just going to say, first of all, I agree with your comment. And I want to take that a step further. So, you know, the proposal saves money. It says it will increase some ridership. My concern is finding those people who aren't using the system that exists today, in part because it doesn't service their area or doesn't service, you know, the direction they want to go. But also, those people that simply don't know that the system's available. And I've encountered more than one of those people that, you know, gave me this start to look to find out that there was bus service over near Coles that they didn't know about, living in senior living. So, you know, I think maybe it plays into your comment, it played to extent, and I think it's a good thought, how do you target the temporary workers that are here? It plays into city managers' comment about using the city to help publicize it. My big concern is that great save money, people use it more because it's, you know, maybe more flexible. But how do we find all of those riders, potential riders out there that the bus could be driving down their street today and they still don't know it's there? And it's a tough nut to crack, but you know, I'm looking at the ridership increase numbers and saying that you can you can get a lot more than that. It's just getting that word out to a lot more people and making them understand it's simple, it's easy, it's nearby, doesn't cost much, it'll take you where you want to go.
Agree. It is an extensive campaign that needs to be developed, Councilman Ferguson.
Anything else on this? Brandy and TJ, thanks for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you all. Appreciate the input.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Are you ready to go back to your agenda?
Yes. And the next item is workshop item C, Mayor. It's the 2020 City Council Retreat Direction Revisited, Castle Hills Parks and Open Space Recreational Easement Overview.
So Mayor and Council, we began discussion of this item at last year's retreat, where we outlined the the situation that we have related to the fact that the H O A actually owns the the parkland. And there's a great concern on the part of Castle Hills residents about that. And so we've spent the last year working on this issue and finding a way to resolve the park issue so that we maintain the parks that are in place now and we achieve the city's goal of a 10 minute walk to a park. So Eric and Stacy have been working hand in hand with the H O A to work through these issues. And I'm going to turn it over to Eric.
Hello, Mayor and Council and staff. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So bear with me. I'm going to spend some time tonight to kind of go over some pretty complicated complicated information and data. So I'll try to go over what we've already been through. But I do, I want to spend some time on this. This is a very important issue. So I'll be using some interactive maps and some other things. So bear with me. And I hope it works. But again, tonight, I'd like to recap again, the 96 agreement and talk about where we were in February of 2020 at the council retreat with those parcels that we had talked about. I also want to introduce some new parcels that were submitted by Bright in the summer. I want to talk to you about those and how those are applicable to possibly a public easement. I'm going to talk a little bit about the proposed easement language, the cost and the the nuts and bolts that's involved with this public easement, and then what are our next steps? So I think I'll just dive right in. Again, as you recall, 1996 agreement, it's a multi-page document, signed in April of 96. Like to say, staff had a lot of back and forth and months and months and months of evaluation of the document, but we did not. But we took it and we made it work over the last 25 years, plus or minus since 96, to make this work for a lot of different things. Of course, the agreement lays out and speaks to annexation. It's creations of our E T J, our five foot strip around the 2,700 acres, outlines special districts, talks about land use, and I'll expand on that in a minute. Also locks in the 1996 general development ordinance and the development guidelines for plating for commercial properties, residential properties, as well as had some exhibits in the back that had council approved variances that were more O P D like in their nature, but was attached to the 96 agreement, laid out the fire police service, and of course, water and sewer service. Talking about zoning or land use, of course, there is no zoning in Castle Hills. Through the years, they as they plotted the properties, they would pick a category in the Louisville zoning ordinance and apply that to the plat to establish the front, side and rear setbacks, the yard setbacks and the densities. And they would apply that to a final plat. But again, the language that's in the 96 is of land use is it's not that detailed. It basically stipulates, and this is language straight out of it, that no less than 450 acres will be designated as public and private open space. And I wish there was a definition for public or private open space in the document. There is not. So I'll tell you, through the years, we've watched plats come in and we were unable to apply the park dedication ordinance back then. We'll speak a little bit about that more in the future. But if you look at the 450 and ask the question, how are we doing with that? Just a few, a little bit of math here at the bottom, 277 acres are in the golf course. Again, that's private property, but you could argue that's open space. 75 acres of opens open space in the realm, that's the one H development, 30 acres crown center. So if you just do that math, there's 500 acres so far, not counting landscape strips and other areas that we'll look at, the X lots that we're going to talk about tonight. So tonight, a little different, we're going to evaluate 73 acres that were being evaluated or considered for parcels relating relating to public parks or an easement. So again, as I said, there is no dedication of a parkland tied to final plats. They're not dedicated to the city or any other entity. But you'll see, if you pull plats up, they're plotted as common lots or X lots designated on those final plats. And they're located throughout the 2,700 acres. Ownership of these X lots vary. The majority of them are currently owned by Castle Hills Master Association, which is the overall association of the lands. Some of the lots are owned currently owned by Castle's Development Corporation, Bright owns some, and Breco. And of course, you have gated communities that have private streets because they're gated, but have maybe public water and sewer, but Enchanted Hills, Goff Villas, Realm West, cottages, those are all sub HOAs. And they have open space, X lots and those as well. But again, those are gated, so they're not going to be privy to where we're going tonight. But again, we're going to talk about these parcels and I'm going to talk about a lot of different uses, not only as open space, but you're going to see some other uses some of these lots have. What we did find back before the retreat, that many of these X lots evidently had an overlying recreational easement on them. And that language was from the C H M A or Bright to District 1A. And basically, it laid out the language of use and open space, but there was some, oh, I'd call eye raising language in there that could possibly enable that those lots to revert back upon due notice to the C H M A and could possibly be used other than open space and common areas. So we'll talk a little bit more about that. But again, we did find that. And my understanding to date that there was easements and Bright is working, we're working with a title company to chase the properties we're going to show you down tonight to make sure that these easements, if they're there, are sunsetted. But my understanding is, and this is verbal, I'll follow this up in the future weeks, but none of these easements actually got filed. But some were signed, but the idea is we're going to do away with this. So hold that thought. Again, in 2019, staff went out to all boards and community meetings and talked about departments and the services and whatnot. But the overlying issue that we heard from the residents, from the boards, was their concern about losing the parks and open spaces through the years that they could be developed upon, that they'd be clawed back and that, you know, some commercial or residential development would happen in their neighborhoods. And they had a big issue of wanting to make sure that didn't happen. And again, as we discussed early, there was never the intent to have park dedication in the mid 90s on plats. So that didn't happen. So again, we we talked to Bright about this issue, about the the overlying concern that citizens just, you know, they they wanted to make sure that their parks and open space, their trails didn't get converted to something else. They were not in favor of dedicating parkland, but they were in favor of developing a perpetual public easement to be placed on certain lots and have the city a part of that that would ensure that nothing would be developed upon that in the future. Now, I'll tell you that, you know, we we did discuss the dedication of parks in the early days in the 90s. We discussed it again in 2019. And to be blunt, I'm not so sure that, you know, again, I think the concern from Bright was that they wanted to make sure that their parks and their their infrastructure were maintained at the level the C H M A was currently providing. Don't think that they really, I don't think they really trusted the city to to provide that level of service on the same plate. Although we think, obviously, we argued that point. But Donna, do you want to add to this? I mean, I want to make sure that this is clear, that we did ask for dedication. They said no, but they wanted the public easement. I think the the reason was that they wanted to make sure that that their parks and what they were doing was under the umbrella of the C H M A and not the city of Louisville, per se.
So Eric's correct. We had a number of conversations with the developer. And there's some concern, we keep talking about dealing with developer, but remember that the developer and the H O A are very much linked. And so we really, the city's preference certainly would have been that all of that parkland would have been dedicated to us as parkland. That's what we're accustomed to, and that's what we believe should have happened. But the developer did not want to do that. And so we do think that what we're talking about with you tonight will get us to the same end result. So that public easement will be something that can't be revoked, that it will make it forever a parkland that can be used by all residents of Louisville. So that's what we've worked very carefully with legal staff to make sure we're achieving that.
Okay, so let's let's talk about a permanent public easement and the benefits and the concerns or issues. And again, it would it would it would benchmark where the the lands, the the properties couldn't be used for anything else other than specified in the easement document. And that's clearly going to be parks and open space. The city could contribute to the cost of that maintenance of partial funding. So there's an opportunity there for the city to contribute to that. We can incorporate these lands into the annexation plan development document. That'll be a multi chapter document upon annexation. And again, add a layer of security that these are parks and will remain parks. Stacy will talk to you in a little bit about the 10 minute walk to a park initiative and how a lot of these common areas, these X lots, will contribute and benefit to that. Because again, this is going to be in the city of Louisville, and hopefully in the upcoming future that again, this 2,700 acres is going to be subject to that test. So Stacy will talk about this in a minute when we get to that.
So Eric, let's stop there. And let's talk about the cost of maintenance and the city contribution. The reason we are looking at that, Council, is because the district boards, managing District 1A, has covered the cost of water and electricity for these parks in the past, or some some of the parks, not all. And so we think that is a negotiating point that we should take on because certainly, you know, a resident of Castle Hills is going to be looking at their the overall benefits of being annexed. And they're going to be looking at their H O A dues as well as their tax rates. So if the city makes a contribution, number one, we can make sure that those lands are maintained to a high level of standard, which I think we have. But also, we're able to keep those H O A dues from rising dramatically. That's all I have. There's questions?
Well, and we have more on that topic at the end of next steps of cost. But again, looking at the issues of this, again, these lands need to be open to the general public if they're public parks, public trails and public corridors. Obviously, if you look at the draw at the picture here, there need to be some amendments to some of their signs, the what the applicable parcels, you can clearly see it says Castle Hills, residents only. And it has the typical, very common language that we have in all of our parks, the hours and the rules there. But would be some amendments to that that would need to be made. And again, part of this, again, is an easement, as a part of property we own or don't own, it's it makes it a little bit more difficult to for city to own improvements on land that we don't own. And absolutely, we have water and sewer line easements across the city of Louisville. We have infrastructure on other properties and easements. But again, those are a little more more simpler. But again, something that we're going to, we've been tackling since retreat in finding a way to do this through an easement that mirrors a public park. Again, to establish the public easements, we're going to need what we're going to call Exhibit A. Where does the easement apply and what parcels? We brought you 30 park properties. They were made up of 42 parcels back at the council retreat. Bear with me. I'm going to try to swap to my my base map.
Hey, Eric, as you're doing that, I just want to let everyone know that we did have someone who wanted to speak on this item, and we will call on you at the end of the presentation if you still do want to speak.
And my keyboard. Oh, unbelievable. The battery's dead. My keyboard just died.
Linda's getting you a battery.
All right. Bear with me. We just talked about the virtual land of presenting in virtual land. These are the things that can happen. Double A's, Melinda. The double A's, Melinda.
Eric, are we getting close?
It's not working.
Eric, can you just go back to the PowerPoint? Not switch.
Yeah, so I don't know, I've lost my ability to swap screens. So again, can y'all hear me?
Yes, Eric, I hear you.
All right. So again, there were 30 park properties of 42 parcels that we presented at council retreat. And I'm just going to move on. And we started evaluating those, but in summer of last year, or this last summer, toward the end of the revision, Bright submitted 127 parcels that they wanted to consider for these easement documents. And I'll tell you that they were scattered all throughout. Some were, obviously, they were all the different park properties that we had been looking at. Okay, here we go. Hang on, maybe I have a little bit of battery left. Can y'all see that?
Yes.
Okay, so again, I'm going to show you, these are the 30 parks in purple here of the 42 parcels that y'all saw at retreat. And again, these were mainly all your named parks throughout Castle Hills. So I'm going to click here and show you the 127 parcels. So there's, I'll zoom in, you can see there's quite a bit more going on in the orange. And they scattered all the way through up in 1H. This is the realm. So you see all these pieces here, and you start to see some kind of little sliver of parcels in between homes. But again, this was the 127 that was submitted back in July. Trying to go back here. And again, we evaluated these and we thought, this is just, there's too much going on with all these. So we broke these down into different types. And these are staff-generated types. But we grouped them into type A, B, C, D, and E. And I'm just going to advance through these. And I'm going to go back to my map and show you, hopefully this works. There we go. Okay, so type A lots, again, are those lots that look like a park, they smell like a park, and pretty much parks, let me go to that first. Again, these were 15 parcels, Dragon Park, Phase 7 Park, Burnt Park, Stony Passage Park, Windsor Castle Park. Those types of properties that you saw were pretty much type A parcels. And again, there's 15 of them. Pirate Ship Park, here's a picture of that, generally what you've seen before. Fire Truck Park, very similar. Parks of type B spaces were large open spaces. Some named parks, but areas where there might be a large field or sports fields or just a green grassy area. This is Fan Park, it's in the middle of Castle Hills, been there a while. One of my favorites, it's a large park right in the middle of homes. Again, this is Warwick Boulevard, this is up north. It's just a large oval piece of property. Again, we classified this as a type B park. Avalon, this was actually a green belt around a drainage infrastructure. You can see that it's got some drainage features down here and bioswelp, if you will, down toward the lakes, but has trails around it. This is an arrow shot of that. You can see the trails that come out and go, have some mobility to connecting neighborhoods. But again, a nice green belt area, but also serves as a utility quarter. Type C properties, this is where there's 92 parcels in this category. These are strips of land, fire control easement. A fire control easement is a 40-foot wide section of property in between homes to break up the 18-platted lots in a row that's found in the GDO. Some of these fire control easements are also utility quarters. There might be a water line or a sewer line or a storm drain in between them. End caps, some combo utility quarters. So you'll see there's a lot of these parcels in type C. And I'll show you some of these here in a minute. This is Pulsar Park. So this is in the southwest corner, it's on the side of a hill, but it is a green belt. I'm going to try to get back out of here and let Stacy talk to you about why some of these parcels in type C were important toward the 10-minute walk. Okay, Stacy, can you unmute and come in from here?
Sure. Mayor, Council, Park fans, this kind of represents Castle Hills and where the parcels we're considering taking with these easements will be and what kind of coverage they give us in the 10-minute walk to a park initiative. The magenta, the pink area that kind of covers the majority of Castle Hills shows how much coverage those parcels we're considering taking will give us, which is pretty good. You'll see a small donut hole down to the left-hand side. That's a gated area. It has its own green space in it, but because it's not available to the rest of Castle Hills, we can't count it. But things like Pulsar Park, which maybe on first glance, you'd say, well, why do we want to take that? Well, one, we want to ensure that we provide coverage. But there's also stuff that we want to do with a park system that's not always, has to do with playability, but also has to do with making sure that we expand and protect and preserve the urban tree canopy. And that's one of these places. There's a small playable area, it's got a nice hill. So if ever snows again, it might be a nice sledding place. But it's also a place that they've dedicated to planting trees and making sure that we retain that. There's also up towards the top of this picture, some places on the northern spots where you might see a piece of property that has a pool and a community center that we're looking at. And we're not interested in the pool or the community center, but we are interested in the spaces immediately adjacent to it that are open space and playgrounds and maybe a basketball court that in general, someone can participate in without having to pay dues or the like. So there are several of those that we're looking to pick up. But overall, the parcels that we're looking at equal about 72 acres and give us very decent coverage with a 10-minute walk to a park so that with the annexation of Castle Hills, we're not compromising our growing ratio of parks to residents.
Yeah, that's right, Stacy. So thank you for that. Again, I'm going to show you some more of these C parcels that, again, are very interesting. This one is on the western side, Hemison Lane. This actually is a utility quarter that has drainage, water, and sanitary sewer in it. I'm going to pop back out and show you these. We're interested in these. This brings up some opportunities that I think Deputy Mayor Protem Green brought up and her pitch and some of the rest of you have. That you can see this quarter through here. Again, where we were looking was in this area here. But I think a lot of residents will look at Lot 448 or Park 449 and say, well, gosh, they can build homes there. But it'd be very difficult. There's large drainage culverts under this lot. There's water lines, there's sewer lines. There's a lot of going on that's underneath these grass areas. So it'd be very difficult to do that. But again, you'll see in coming up on our proposed, we're going to take real interest in a lot of these. But again, it's mobility, it's moving through the neighborhood off-street and gives you a very good experience along the way. So you'll see some of these coming up in the C category as well. Again, this is down Round Table Green Belt, down by one of the ponds that provides drainage and outfall to one of the lakes. But again, it's a nice green area. This is a quarter down in the burnt tract to where, again, they've taken fire control easements and utility quarters. Bear with me, I'm going to move down there. So this is this quarter through here where you have trails and you have utilities again, but it also serves as a platted fire control easement to break up the platted lots. And again, provides mobility from the south end of burnt off of the boulevard here all the way through the north. So that's a common theme that we're going to show interest in on gathering some of these parcels for consideration of easement acquisitions or applications. So if that makes sense, that's what you'll see in a minute on these. Now again, some of these C lots, we're not too interested in. This is an entry feature off the golf villas. It's just a corner clip, it's an X lot, it's a common lot, it's on the list, but probably not that appropriate for a public easement. I'm going to bounce back out and show you a few more that are obviously X lots. But I think my friend here will be helpful to show some of these. So.
Hey Eric?
Yes?
I have a quick question. The fire control lots, are there, are you saying those are already dedicated easements or they're not?
Yes, ma'am, those are already dedicated as a fire control easement. But there might be a water line, a sanitary sewer easement in there as well. So in other words, they accomplish a lot of things by that green space in between those homes, including a trail. But they're a combination of a lot of things, Kristen. So if that answers your question on that.
Okay.
Now, some of these C lots, I'm going to zoom into this one. This is, I'm going to turn on the aerial, hopefully it won't crash me. So this is going to be south of the tracks. It's going to be on the north side of the golf course. You can see this guy has this nice lot and tennis courts, this is all private. But here's the next lot. Well, that's probably, that's probably not going to be too applicable to a public easement. So it's still an X lot, and the CHMA owns it, but it's what I call no man's land. And there's a number of those like that throughout Castle Hills. There's some tiny slivers down here that are more just behind homes, alleys, and really don't have a lot of public purpose. So you'll see some of these carved outs in a little bit, once we start narrowing down the list. But I did want to bring that up, that although there's 127 lots or parcels, we're probably not going to be that interested in some of them. Type D lots, these are the ones Stacy we're talking about that are HOA-type of amenities, whether it's, they have a park, I mean, a building or a pool or a tennis court, or things that aren't open generally to the public. But again, there's seven parcels here. We'll show you some that we're interested in. And I think Stacy talked about Northeast Park, North Park, and maybe some of the others, but maybe some not on the others. But these, again, are your HOA buildings, swimming pool, kind of your gated areas. But we have interest in these green areas here with the playsets, shade structures. Those have a purpose as well and do aid in that 10-minute walk to a park test. The last category are lake lots. There's two or three merlins ponds around the east gate, on the east side. These are drainage structures. Although they're green belts and nice, their primary function is for drainage, detention and retention ponds. There's some amenities here, there's probably some ADA questionability on some of the things, little seating areas and walkways. But again, these are drainage structures. I'm not so sure that, you know, we're going to have a high interest in these in remaining public because they're going to pretty much be a detention-retention pond for a long time. And the likelihood of those converting is not as high as some of the others. So again, just wanted to show you some of these. So we evaluated all 127. And again, I told you that some of these may not be the right fit for a public easement type of document. So what did we come up with? We narrowed it to 59. And it's a combination of A, B, C, and D parcels. Again, they have to be open to the public. We can carve out the save and accept, the buildings, the pools, the deckers, the tennis courts on some of these and remain public on five of the parcels that are HOA parcels. None of the gated parcels will count because it's gated. Again, we need an Exhibit A to apply a public easement to. So we've carved out 59 of those. And let me send you through that right quick so we can take a look at those. Okay, so again, if I walk you back through the As, there they are in blue. Bs are kind of green. Cs are red, and you can start seeing these all throughout. Ds, again, remember those are the HOA lots with improvements. And then Es, there's a couple of lake lots. So a lot going on there at 127. If I remove these and show you the 59, the combination of it's going to look something like this. Remember, we were at 30 parks, 42 parcels, we're at 59 parcels now. And it's a combination of all the categories that I showed you. You'll see the quarters down in burnt where you get the trails, the utility quarters. You'll see quarters up through here. Of course, you'll see Fan Park, Fire Truck Park, Castle Park, and those in this section, as well as some of the areas up to the north and east that Stacy was talking about where there's opportunities for green space that serve multiple purposes for the residents that live close by, as well as others that may want to travel through Castle Hills. So again, that's where we are with the 59 parcels. Now let me come back to our presentation. So we're at Exhibit A. So we need to apply a recreational easement. So what does that look like? Of course, we need to be dealing with one property owner. So right now, Bright is in the Castle Hills Master Association. The other properties that we talked about earlier in the presentation through Breco, Castle Hills Development Corporation, they're in the process of transferring ownership of the last four or five parcels into the CHMA. That way, we're dealing with one entity on a public partnership easement. The grantor is going to be the CHMA. The grantee, obviously, is the City of Louisville. So what is the grantor going to do? They're going to grant a perpetual public recreational easement and right-of-way over, across, in, and on the easement area, Exhibit A. across, in, and on the easement area, Exhibit A, those 59 parcels. Again, the way we're approaching this is that the grantor is going to maintain it, they're going to operate it, they're going to repair it, they're going to replace the infrastructure, do inspections, they're going to do turf maintenance and mowing, irrigation, trails, lighting, seating, playgrounds, pavilions, and all of that. Again, remember our discussion earlier that it's pretty tough for us to, to put infrastructure on property we don't own. So the idea here is that the CHMA will continue to maintain, and they already own the infrastructure on these properties as well, so that's, that's the direction that we're headed with the grantor on this item. We'll come back to this one. But again, the grantor also has the liability and the responsibility to comply with all federal, state, local laws, ADA, PROWAG, the Texas Architectural Barriers Act, or TOS. So they're responsible. Their equipment, so again, they're going to be the ones responsible that the city would be held harmless in that respect of liability because we don't own that infrastructure, they do, so they would be responsible for that. Again, they wouldn't be able to, we've heard this through the discussions through the community, that what happens if they start taking playgrounds out, or lights out, or benches out and trying to revert it? Well, they couldn't do that under this easement without written permission from the city, so we would work hand-in-hand with the CHMA, not only for that type of things, but when they add infrastructure, or of course, work hand-in-hand with maintenance and inspections if they needed our assistance or whatnot. Again, the CHMA or the property owner would not request residential or commercial uses or zoning. Again, more of a security blanket to make sure that these lands are perpetual as a park and open space for the future. And if the grantor fails to perform such those obligations that are laid out in this easement on due notice, the city can come in there and, and say if it was mowing, or haul off trash, or replace a broken slide or something, we could do it, we can get reimbursed for that as well. So there'll be provisions for that in the easement language as draft is now. Again, in general, the, the public grant, it would, it would grant the general public the right to use these properties in Exhibit A, the 59. Again, only used for recreational purposes and no charge for the public to, to use or to, to gain entry into the lands. So again, if you look at the recreational fee that Donna was talking about, this would be something that could be due on January 1st of the calendar year. And again, it would be based upon partial reimbursements of the cost that the CHMA would incur. And again, the language there is, is partial reimbursements. We don't own this. Again, we're not going to maintain it, but again, the idea is we would come up with a fee in costs that are reflected or similar to the city's average mowing cost and things that are associated with that. It would be a one-time annual fee that would go to the, to the, to the CHMA. And again, the idea was that the city contribution would partially replace the district's contribution to maintenance. And again, not all, because again, you're talking about lighting, water, irrigation, and other things that are out there. But again, that's, that's kind of the, where we're headed right now. Donna, do you want to chime in here and add a little bit to that?
So I think you've covered it, Eric, and I think at this point, we just need to hear from the council to see if they have questions. We're still, council, looking at the numbers. We're not recommending a fee for you tonight. I want to spend some more time talking with staff and with District 1A staff, and make sure we've got our hands around what's being paid now, and what the city would be willing to contribute. So we, we need to spend a little bit more time on that, but I'd like to stop here and just see if council has any questions or concerns about the concept that we are suggesting.
I have a couple of questions. Well, one of my questions, you kind of hit on, and it sounds like we maybe not have the answer to this one, but my, my question was regarding the annual fee. Would that be something that would be a flat fee based on just a flat fee times how many parcels, or would it be more catered to what that parcel is and, and what, how it functions and the purpose of it?
I'm envisioning that it's more of just a flat fee, but again, we're, we're pretty early into this conversation, and so I'd want to spend some more time to see what we're going to be able to negotiate with the HOA.
Okay. My second question was, I guess I'm having a hard time, particularly with the, the fire control lots, or maybe a lot that has, you know, a drainage purpose, or, you know, or a, you know, it has a water line under it, some of those lots that really can't be developed otherwise because they've got an over, either a fire easement or a utility easement across it. Just wondering if, because I think I saw some of those fire control with the townhome lots, that it looked like there, some of those fire control were listed in the, the ones that we're looking at. And I, if there's an existing easement there which would prevent those lots from ever being developed on, I'm not quite sure I understand why we would need to dedicate an additional easement on top of that. Is it just to keep the sidewalk there?
I think, I think the idea was, again, that, you know, if you look at, I can step back, I think the idea was, again, to, the trails that are there, and again, a lot of these, a lot of park properties in Lewisville have utility easements through them, but the idea was to make them a park and help kind of unilaterally a lot of different issues, whether it's the 10-minute walk to a park, or give the confidence that the community would be able to have mobility through there. You know, to undo a fire control easement, I'm not saying it can't be done, you're right, it's a difficult thing to do. To relocate, relocate a water line is probably easier than a sanitary sewer line. Some have them, some don't, but I think what we were thinking was that if it served a public purpose and passed the test of mobility, trails, amenities, green space, and what we were thinking, well, why not? If it connects one, one area to the other, and not all of them are in the list of 59. We, again, we're down from 127 to 59, but I think what we were trying to do, Kristen, was designate those as a public park via easement, kind of as a touche on top of what's already there. And again, they were listed, the proposal from Bright, so we, we did that for that reason.
In addition, what I would add, Councilman Green, is remember, we are trying to measure that 10-minute walk to a park, and by putting a recreation easement on some of those properties that is providing that 10-minute walk criteria.
Okay, so that was my next question. So if it's, if we don't dedicate that as a, as a recreational easement, then it doesn't, it can't count against the 10-minute walk to a park?
That is my understanding. Is that correct, Stacy?
Yes, ma'am. The, the primary reason for those FCEs that we've, we've looked at for the recreation easement is for that access requirement of the 10-minute walk to a park.
Okay, that makes complete sense. That answers my question. I'm no longer confused. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I'd like to ask a question that kind of, she covered almost exactly the same things I wanted to know, but I want to take it one step further. So fire control districts that do not contribute to 10-minute walk to a park, are they still in the bundle, or is there any reason to have them? Well, again, I think, you know, there's, if I go back, bear with me here, I'll just, I'll take Burnt for an example. Can y'all see this?
Yes.
Okay. So again, these are some that Stacy's talking about here, as well as, again, these are, these are fire control easements, but they're also utility quarters, but again, they have trails through them that take you through the subdivision. I think there's a few more Neil through here, maybe one or two up here that already, by the way, there are fire controllers, but that, but these two up here, I believe are FCEs, but they're, they have park and infrastructure on them, they're playsets and playgrounds, and I believe they're under, they might be blue, but again, there's not as many of the FCEs other than Burnt. There's utility quarters like this, again, that to the layman, if you're standing in this street right here, it looks like you could build a house here or here. And if you didn't know, that's another thing we're trying to do, is give that security blanket to the citizens out there that these are now public parks, although I told you before, there's eight-foot, I think there's six-by-eight-foot boxes under this lot, and there's water and sanitary sewer lines that run through this corridor. Could they be relocated? Well, yes. Is it practical? No. Is it economically? Heck, no. It'd be very expensive, but again, we're trying to give the, the residents of Castle Hills the security that what they see out there in open space is going to remain. So I hope I answered your question, but I think the main fire control easements are down in this southern end here, and the rest of them are either utility quarters, gas easements, or drainage easements that, again, still have that public, the public may not know there's a gas line easement here, but I think this is what this is along King Arthur, but it's a nice trail quarter that, again, from what we're hearing, they're concerned that these could be converted or sold to the adjacent property owner of the golf course and be turned into something else, which of course, that can happen with an easement on it, but some of these areas as well up here have interesting opportunities in, inside of Street Oval cul-de-sacs. So I think what you're telling me is what I want to hear, which is, and I think I've been hearing, is that if it doesn't meet some objective, if it isn't a 10-minute walk, if it isn't to give residents the confidence that a house can't be built on a lot that looks like it's feasibly possible, if it, you know, solves some objective, then we're interested in it, but if it doesn't, doesn't meet something on what seems like a fairly short checklist, then we're not interested.
That is correct, Councilman.
Yes, sir. Exactly. And again, I'm going to put you right here, that, that these are the ones I heard from, that it's house, 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 vacant lot, you know, and it's the same dimensions as the houses down the way, and they said, well, gosh, they could build a house there. And it's dimension where they could, same thing here. But again, when you turn on the aerials and see what's under it, it's not that they couldn't do it, it would be very expensive to do it, but again, these types of corridors, you know, they, 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 they take you through the neighborhood quite nicely and accomplish some of the things that'll probably be in our code rewrite to allow for moving through your neighborhood, you know, through a nice corridor off-street to some degree, and some of these are good opportunities as opposed to some of the ones I showed you that, that aren't. There's some on the 127 that just really serve no purpose other than they're, they're spare parts.
Here, we did have.
Go ahead.
We had someone who did submit a card that they wish to speak. Mr. Martin, if you wish to speak, if you want to raise your hand now, we can let that
So we're not, we're not hearing you, Mr. Martin?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. We can, yes, sir.
Hey, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak, and, and I do want to make a statement with respect to Donna and Brenda and the staff, and I'm, as well a resident, I'm also on one of the boards, and I'm also on the committee for the annexation. So I do have a good perspective on the hard work that's going on from the city's point of view, trying to make this annexation work, and, excuse me, to deal with the issues and the concerns that the residents have. And I will tell you that we are really concerned about the, the parks, and we want to, as you have heard from the staff, we want to ensure that the parks remain parks, that they're protected, that they're maintained, and that they're improved over time. One observation with respect to the discussions is that the districts, that the taxpayer districts are actually funding all the improvements with taxpayer dollars, it's not the HOA that's putting equipment and awnings and improving these parks. So as we are looking at what happens after annexation as to improvements, today, the HOA is not making those improvements. We would not anticipate they would do that going forward. So that is a concern of the residents of what happens from an improvement point of view, not necessarily what happens with the, you know, watering the grass and mowing the grass, but when the equipment needs to be replaced and/or an awning is, you know, destroyed by either mischief or some kind of weather-related event, what happens to those things in the future? That's an important consideration from the resident's point of view. Ownership, obviously, is important to us because we want to make sure those parks remain parks, and as I said, get improvements and, and stay current with what's going on in the community. Secondly, there is a concern about the repurposing of those, those common areas. There are lots today described by Platte as common lots, and as we've noticed over the last 60 days, there are two areas on King Arthur where common lots are now being slated for two residential homes on one common lot, two residential homes on another common lot. So what we fear is that that could conceivably happen again, and so your efforts to try to ensure that the language gets put into the agreement that gets put into the annexation agreement that protects those lots from having that happen in the future is very important to us. The, the, as I mentioned, the improvements to the parks today is being done by the individual districts and taxpayer funds. One of the concerns of the residents and the boards is that some of the taxpayer funds have been spent on private property, common lots adjacent to the golf course by 1A, in objection to the districts, and we're concerned about what's going to happen going forward if the Master Association owns those lots, and who's going to fund the maintenance and improvements on those lots? We see them taking taxpayer money today to do that on private property, and so that's a concern of the community as well. And then I'll make one final statement. We are concerned about if those parks are private property going forward, what the child safety zone considerations are for sex offenders on those parks, being that they're public use, but private property, do the sex offender child safety zone regulations, do they prevail based on those being private lots? Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, and I would like to follow up with you individually on some of those questions, probably a little broader than the presentation for tonight, but we have your same issues and concerns, and so the, the language of the easement is going to be very, very important to clarify what the HOA's responsibilities are and the city's responsibilities. So we'll work diligently to make sure that there is clarification.
Thank you, Donna, and, and again, I do want to, you know, especially call out the cooperation that we've had, and, you know, and clearly Brenda being our liaison is doing a great job with us, so we want to continue that and look forward to moving toward successful parks and open space resolution as well as the annexation. parks and open space resolution as well as the annexation.
Thank you. We, we want the same thing. It's important for all residents to have access to green space, and we want to make sure there's no changes there for you.
You bet. Thank you.
You're welcome. Eric, do you want to walk through your next steps?
Okay, Julie, was there anybody else out there? Julie?
No, Eric, that was it.
Okay, so next steps, Council, we're going to wrap this up, but again, we're working with, right, right now, that we'll get verification, legal verification of that the existing easements, those ones from CHMA and Breco to 1A are not executed, they're not filed, if they are, they have to be removed, so we get those wiped off, if you will, from the, from the Exhibit A list, the 59 parcels, and we'll get that, we'll get that rolling and get that verified. Again, we also need to verify that all lots in Exhibit A are owned by CHMA. It's a better, better situation to be dealing with one entity than two or three or four, and so we're working to get that finalized, depending upon feedback and comments for tonight on the 59. Again, as Donna said, we'll be negotiating the annual easement fee with Bright, and Mr. Martin is absolutely correct, and so he, Council, that has made that comment that, you know, what, just because you can mow one field, it's not the same price as another and the same as maintenance, there's a high, medium, and low, depending upon what's there and what terrain is there and what infrastructure is there, so we'll try to get that where it, it makes sense, and again, once we get those individual documents, we'll be submitting the easement document for Bright for approval and execution. So those are kind of our next steps, and that concludes the presentation for tonight, and sorry about the battery dying on the keyboard, but I don't know.
Rest of the plans. Council, I would add, when you talk about the master association and the developer, I do think that they share the residents and the cities' focus on providing a quality of life, and that, you know, quality of life is provided, you know, through green space and trails and parks, and so I, I do think there is cooperation there, we just have to work through the details of making sure that it's clear on who's responsible for what. And if we, Council, if you have any other questions, we want to answer that. If not, that is our presentation for tonight.
I have a quick question on the next steps. Is there an estimated timeframe on that?
So we've, Eric's done a lot of the heavy lifting, I think that we should be able to resolve, I hope, these additional issues within the next several months. Obviously, the target for annexation is December 22, we need to have all issues resolved before that time, so I would like to have this one put to bed within the next few months.
Anybody else have anything on this? Okay, we'll continue with the ladies. City Secretary.
Moving into regular session, the next item is the presentation Salvation Army to present the National Red Kettle Kickoff, Mayor Durham to issue a challenge to the town of Flowermount and city of Highland Village. I believe Stephen Thomas from Salvation Army is on with a presentation. Mr. Thomas, if you want to share your screen, you can.
Are we good?
You are good.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just quickly want to review our mission again, and then go over some of the changes we had to make because of COVID and how we're serving, so you understand that, and then, then the ask of some help with our Red Kettle campaign. So our mission, it's doing the most good. Our mission's to feed, to clothe, to comfort, to care, rebuild broken homes and broken lives, walking with the addicted and lead them to recovery, fighting hunger and poverty, feeding and nurturing the spirit. So preach the gospel of Jesus Christ and meet human needs in his name without discrimination. Show God's love, grace, and mercy to everyone. I wanted to show we're good neighbors. On the holiday stroll, we brought the Salvation Army band out, they social distance, we had over 70 people come, and we kept it safe with the social distancing, the band had cover masks for their wind instruments, but it was, it was a really, really good time by all, it was, that was that Saturday night, this last Saturday night. So COVID really changed everything for us, and not, not all for the bad, because we are serving more efficient and effectively than we ever have with less help. So what we're doing now is taking everything outside, we started taking all programs outside, we tried to do social service, actually, so, social casework inside the emergency disaster canteen with social distancing, that didn't work, everything's remote with the social casework with the utility and rent assistance, but all of our other programs, food pantry, you know, personal care items, hygiene, diapers, socks, underwear, shoes, that's all done with a mobile food pantry. So the mobile food pantry, we, it's gone absolutely crazy, we have, we're serving dried groceries, boxes of produce, milk, cheese, eggs, bread, frozen meat, personal care items, diapers, new socks, new underwear, new shoes, every Tuesday and every Thursday, and we're serving close to 2,000 now. When we started, before COVID, we were serving about 200 people a week, now we're right at 2,000, and the mobile food pantry has been just a godsend, and a week and a half ago, we gave out 600 hams and 600 turkeys to the community, and what's happened is we have more support than ever before with North Texas Food Bank, Denton County Commissioners' Court, grants from our city, and United Way Churches, we have like 20, 20 partners that help us with food drives, personal care drives, diaper drives, civic groups, companies like Amazon, and that group that you see there, that's the Amazon Leadership Group that came over from the new distribution center they have off Corporate Drive, they came out and helped, but we went from 300-plus volunteers a week down to about 50 to 60 now, but it's working, we're most efficient and most effective than we ever have been, and with less people, but we have the support of all these groups and agencies and individuals. We've been extremely cognizant of safety, we have yet to have any, anyone who tested positive on our campus that we're aware of, we wear masks and face shields for anyone going to, near a car, everybody inside has to wear face shields, and we sign in and take temperatures on everyone coming into the building. So that has, has been, you know, a godsend and very, very important. We do still serve hot nutritious lunches that are built inside with our institutional kitchen, they're served outside on tables with the queuing up of 12 feet apart, or the clients can drive through and we can hand off the lunches. So now with our theme, it's Rescue Christmas, and Rescue Christmas means Angel Tree, it means the Red Kettle Campaign and program. With Angel Tree, we, we have thousands of toys and gifts that are facilitated by us for kids that may not have a Christmas without those. There's still some fallen angels or angel tags in Walmarts I saw a couple of days ago, just in case you're interested. So the, the Red Kettle Campaign kickoff, there's more need than ever, we have new, new people coming every week, every day for help, and it just continues to grow. So this year happens to be greater, it's the greatest need that I've ever seen, people losing their jobs, people having all kinds of issues that you wouldn't even realize, just not just a result of losing a job, and we're there to help, help them through everything that we can, that we're able to. So what happens here is I've got to have the volunteers for the Red Kettle Campaign, we do have safety protocols, we supply masks, hand sanitizers, gloves, we just, like I told you, it's really, really important, we, we are so strong on safety, and the kettles, Red Kettle bell ringing is, is contact-free, so you stand away from the kettle, you don't touch the money, and again, we provide the mask, hand sanitizer, and the gloves, and the safety protocols and guidelines. So the ask, I need volunteers, I need donations, my budget, my operation budget is a huge percentage of what we gain with this campaign, our only one fundraising campaign for the year, and, you know, our goal for this campaign for the next four weeks is $130,000, and so we're behind right now, so any way that you could help me, ring a bell, give a donation, we're good stewards of money, every dollar that you give, a great percentage, almost all of the money goes directly to helping people, our overhead is, is next to nothing. So we, we're, we're here to help, we're here to support the community, continue to do the most good, and I just have to ask for your help. Mayor Durham, do you have any questions?
Does anybody, either you, Mr. Thomas, or the staff at Louisville, have the, where and when the, we're going to have the bell ringer set, where, where we're going to have it and when we're going to have it?
Yes, Mayor, I'm sorry, you, go ahead, Mr. Thomas.
It's, it's Saturday, December 19, and the shifts be filled from 11 to 8 at Sam's, that's the best location we have currently in Louisville, and any shifts that you don't, you aren't able to fill with volunteers there, I will fill with others.
So we're all filled, Steve?
We're all filled.
Wow, fantastic.
And I will just add this, Mayor, I'm really tired of Highland Village winning this challenge.
Yes, but they are great people, we'd like their donations.
We do, but we need more Louisville donations.
That's for sure. Well, I think we've already got 300 and about 350 in the, in the kettle, in the virtual kettle for Mayor Durham already today.
That's great, and you'll get more.
What were the dates again?
It's December 19.
Yeah.
We don't have anything on 18th anymore?
No, sir.
Okay, 19th, sorry about that.
That's the challenge day.
Yes.
I appreciate this opportunity to speak before you, and, and, you know, I, I hope you know our commitment to the city and commitment to the residents and to all the, all the need that happens, and it grows, we flex and change where we have to, to be more efficient and more effective for the community and the individuals we serve.
I have a few words to say on this. The Salvation Army has been a great community partner for Louisville and neighboring cities for many years. The group's work with the homeless and others in need has changed hundreds of lives right here in Louisville. They deserve our support. This year's, as in years past, I am issuing a challenge to both the town of Flowermount and the city of Highland Village for a friendly competition, a bell ringing for the Salvation Army's Red Kettle Campaign fundraiser. Everyone likes to win, and I would love to see Louisville finish ahead of our neighbors in this friendly competition, but the most important thing is the good that will come out of the donations that are made either in the Red Kettle or online. I encourage everyone to show the world that Louisville has a great, big heart. You can make a difference this holiday season. Please join me in this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to let everyone know that the, the link to the virtual kettle is included as part of this backup. If you're unable to find it, please contact City Hall, and we will be happy to share that link with you, and as Mr. Thomas already said, we already are starting to collect donations, so we encourage everybody to contribute if they're able to.
Good luck, everybody.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, Julie, next.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, public hearing number one. Public hearing, consideration of an ordinance to enlarge the boundaries of the tax increment reinvestment zone number one, extend the term of the zone, and approve the third amended and restated project plan and financing plan. On July 9, 2020, the Board of Directors approved clause number one, adopt the third amendment to enlarge the boundaries of the zone to include 166 acres of expansion area and to extend the term of the zone by 10 years to December 31, 2038. The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance that's set forth in the caption. I believe Jason Moore is available to address any questions and may have a presentation on this item.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, this is going to be two different motions separated by a vote. On the first motion, to close the public hearing.
Second.
City Secretary, roll the call.
I just want to let everyone know that we did not have any speakers, anyone asking to make any comments on this item. Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson made the motion, Councilmember Jones seconded the motion, Councilmember Troyer.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Green.
Aye.
Mayor, those are all aye votes.
Okay, now for the second motion, I'll call for a motion and a second.
Move to, move to approve.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion at this time?
City Attorney. This is an ordinance enlarging the boundaries of reinvestment zone number one, city of Louisville, Texas, extending the term of the zone, approving the third amended and restated project plan and financing plan, containing findings and provisions related to the foregoing subject, providing for severability in effect date and declaring an emergency.
Okay, City Secretary, call the roll.
So Councilmember Troyer made the motion, Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Green seconded the motion, Councilmember Troyer.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Green.
Aye.
Mayor, those are all aye votes.
Okay, motion passed, thank you. Okay, next.
The next item is visitor citizen forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making impersonal, impertinent, profane, and/or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, standing at feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. Mayor, we received no cards and we have no hands raised for this item.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
That's just visitor citizen.
Do what?
That was just visitor citizen. We need to move to consent next.
I think you're there. See, we're ready to move on, okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I'm on the wrong thing, huh?
No, you're right.
Okay. Good motion, second, roll call.
So Councilmember Jones made the motion, Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson seconded the motion, Councilmember Troyer.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Deputy- Deputy Mayor Protem Green?
Aye.
Mayor, those are all aye votes.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Now, they're on the regular hearing, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Agenda item six, consideration of a resolution extending the declaration of local disaster for public health emergencies signed by Mayor Rudy Durham on March 13th, 2020 until 11:59 PM on December 21st, 2020. On March 13th, 2020, Mayor Rudy Durham, acting in accordance with the authority granted to him under the city charter and code of ordinances and under section 4.18.108A of the Texas Government Code, declared a local state of disaster for public health emergency for the city due to the concerns related to the novel coronavirus, now designated SARS-CoV-2, COVID-19, the disaster declaration. The Louisville City Council subsequently ratified and supported the disaster declaration and has been sent into its continuation until 11:59 PM on December 7th, 2020. Ongoing evaluations of circumstances related to the virus and the updated recommendations of the Centers for Disease Control and the Texas Department of State Health Services indicate that the conditions necessitating the disaster declaration have and will continue to exist for a period extended beyond December 7th, 2020. The recommendation is that the city council consider the resolution as set forth in the caption.
Okay, first of all, is there any discussion? Okay, so a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. City Secretary, call the roll.
So Mayor Protem Ferguson made the motion. Councilmember Jones seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Protem Green?
Aye.
Mayor, those were all aye votes.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully someday we won't have to do these every council meeting, seems like. Now we are down to reports. Donna, do we have?
We do not have any reports for tonight.
Okay. I want to call the council members. If y'all have anything, we can go start with it. Councilmember Troyer?
I just want to compliment the Maine and Mill Association and everybody involved in pulling off the holiday stroll on Saturday. It was, I enjoyed it. There were, there were a lot of people. One of the most interesting things that I heard was I was sitting, sitting at one of the tables in Poindexter, on Poindexter Street, and I overheard a conversation with a group of people that was, were there. And they said, we had, I had no idea Lewisville had this. And I thought it was, you know, it just pointed out that, you know, we're getting, we got some positive feedback from people that saw it. So kudos to everyone involved.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Ferguson?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a few MCL Grand activities to report. First of all, on the performance side, the Nutty Nutcracker will be presented by Lake City's Ballet December 18th and 19th. And then the Nutcracker Suite will be presented by the Lake City's Ballet on December 18th. Acoustic jams continue presented by the Visual Arts League on Fridays, except for December 25th. And then in the art gallery, we have the, what's become Annual Gift of Art. This is a presentation in which local artists are invited to show their creations and be able to sell them to the public. So that began on December 4th, and it will continue through January 2nd. So drop by, support your local artists. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gilmore?
Nothing for me tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Jones?
Just want to tell everybody to stay safe out there. Make sure you wear your mask and clean your hands. I just got over a recent bout with COVID. I tried to do everything right. I guess something got missed. Luckily, I had a mild case. But let me tell you, all you folks out there talking about it's the flu. It's nothing like the flu. You don't want this. And I'm still, I'm on the mend, still going through some coughing fits and some bouts of tiredness. But yeah, this is not the flu, folks. Be safe.
Good well. Deputy Mayor Protem Green?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Okay. City Secretary?
Close session. In accordance with Texas Government Code Subchapter D, 1, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney pending litigation, city of Allen, Texas, et al. V., Time Warner Cable, Texas, LLC, DVA Spectrum and Charter Communications, case number 619-CV-345-ADAJCM, United States District Court, Western District of Texas, Waco Division. Number 2, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, legal issues related to the eastern portion of Podler Street, abutting 419 Mel Street, 421 Mel Street, and 535 Mel Street, with Edward Street on the south and Houston Street on the north. 3, Section 551.072, real estate, property acquisition. 4, Section 551.074, personnel, city manager, Donna Baron. 5, Section 551.087, economic development, deliberations regarding economic development negotiations.
We're gonna go into closed session. But first, we'll take a recess for five minutes, and then we'll go into closed session. And open session. Hold on just a second. They're doing some paperwork over here.
Make sure we got everybody in.
Bob, Brandon, Kristen, TJ.
Neil.
I don't know who else is not here. Except those three on the bottom.
Oh, hang on. Let me shut this off.
Krista, they need, okay. Now we're looking for Neil. Neil, are you here? Back on this line, Paul.
You, you are live.
Yeah, let's give Neil just, okay, there's Donna.
Okay, do we have an action? Is it ready?
Yeah, let's give Neil just a minute to come in.
Okay. We're waiting on Neil to get back in here. We'll give him a few more minutes.
Okay, all right, Neil's there.
Okay, Neil's back. Is there any action to be taken? Or is there motion to be taken, an action from the board, from the closed session?
Mayor, I'd like to move to amend the city manager's employment agreement dated April 21, 2014, to provide an exception to the residency requirement for the last 36 months of her employment as long as her residence is with a 30-minute drive of the city limits.
Second.
Got a second? Okay, is there any discussion, further discussion? Okay, City Secretary, call the roll.
I showed that Councilwoman Gilmore made the motion, and Mayor Protem Ferguson seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Protem Green?
Aye.
Mayor, those were all aye votes.
Okay, Donna, I think we got that taken care of. So is there a motion to adjourn?
Thank you, Council.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, that was a motion and a second.
I'm gonna call if Councilman Jones made the motion, and now let's do a second.
Second.
Call the roll.
Okay, so Councilman Jones made the motion. Councilman Gilmore seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ferguson? Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Protem Green?
Aye.
Mayor, those were all aye votes.
Okay, we are adjourned, and everybody have a good week or two before Christmas now.